Let's go ahead and call to order the Common Council meeting of Tuesday, March 16th, 2021, and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alder Furman.
Present.
Harrington McKinney.
How's that?
Eck.
Here.
Hennick.
Present.
Campbell.
Here.
Lemmer.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Presto Giacomo.
Here.
Ramel.
Present.
Skidmore.
Here.
Tierney.
Here.
Verbiere.
Here.
Wajaliye.
Here.
Abbas.
Here.
Alboris.
Here.
Balde.
Here.
Bidar. Carter.
Present.
Evers.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have quorum. Thank you. I want to start by just reminding us that we're trying to create here a productive space for doing the business of the city. And so I'd ask everyone, members of the body, staff, and any public here for comment, to please refrain from any personal attacks or profanity during our meeting. Thank you. And President Carter, if you would move... Oh, I'm sorry. Joe, would you give us the the meeting instructions, please?
Yes. Welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Members, if you are able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. All panelists, that is, alders and staff, have the ability to mute and unmute themselves. Please continue to use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the council may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the council, please send it to the email listed on today's agenda. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you. President Carter, a motion on suspension of the rolls, please. You're muted, President Carter.
I hate that mute button. Suspension of the rules 2.04, Order of Business, 2.05, Introduction of Business, 2.24 Ordinances, and 2.25 Resolution for Items So Designated on the Agenda.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to suspend the rules. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of suspension of the rules? Seeing no objection, those items are suspended for items so designated on the agenda. We have no petitions or communications, so we will go to early public comment. We have one early public comment from Craig Brown of Van Heys Ave. And Craig, if you could tell us what item you're registered on before you start.
Mayor, I see no one by that name in the list.
All right. Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. President Carter?
Yes. The consent agenda will be moved with recommendation recommended action listed for each item except: one, items which have registrants wishing to speak; two, items which require extraordinary roll call vote and are not included on the consent agenda by unanimous consent; three, items which all the persons have separated out for discussion and debate purposes. Items, agenda items two through four are public hearing items. Exemajority items are 65, 75, and 81. Consent agenda items with additional recommendations, as noted, is item 11, Adopt Substitute Resolution; item 67, Adopt Substitute Resolution. Consent agenda items with additional recommendations, as noted, continued; item 88, Additional Referral to the Public Safety Review Committee on April 14th. Finance Committee is the lead would change to from March 22nd to April 26th. Item 89, Additional Referral to the PSRC on April 14th. Finance is the lead that would change to April 26th. Item 97, Additional Referral to the Transportation Commission, March 24. Items for exclusion, there were no items. Items introduced from the floor for referral, item 64671. Recommended action referred to Finance Committee 322 and Downtown Coordinating Committee 318, Common Council 330. Legis star item 64676, recommend action referred to City Attorney. Item 64693, recommended to Finance on 322. Item by 64699, by title only, recommended action is to refer to Finance Committee. And finally, 64709, referred to Common Council for Adoption on 330.
All right. So there's the motion. I will note that we have registrants on item 12, so that will be excluded from the consent agenda. Are there other items that alders would like excluded from the consent agenda? Alder Harrington McKinney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item number 9464593.
Item 94. Alder Hennick.
I would like to be added to item 11, 64396.
Add Alder Hennick as a sponsor on item number 11.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Are there additional items that alders would like to have excluded from the consent agenda? President Carter?
I would like additional referral on 64709 to CCEC and to Finance.
CCEC and Finance for the new introduction of Legis star 64709?
Correct.
All right. Alder Harrington McKinney, did you have an additional request?
No, I'm lowering my hand.
Thank you. Are there any other items for exclusion from the consent agenda? Seeing none, are there any disclosures or recusals on any items on our agenda? Seeing none, any additional sponsorship requests? All right. So just to recap then, items two through four are public hearings. And extra majority votes will be recorded on items 65, 75, and 81. There are additional recommendations on 11 and 67. Those are both substitutes. And then additional referrals on items 88, 89, and 97. We are excluding items 12 and 94. And we have a number of introductions from the floor. I will note... I'm sorry, Madam Clerk?
Madam Mayor, I just want to note that item 94 is a new business item.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for catching that. So Alder Harrington McKinney, item 94 is on for introduction. So we won't be able to separate it at this time, but you'll have ample chance to get your questions answered or for debate at a future meeting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. And thank you to the clerk. So going backwards then, exclusion is just item 12. We have a number of introductions from the floor. And then on the public comment front, I will note for item 74, we have Jacob Klein here in support, available for questions. On item 77, we have four people, including the owners of the proposed store here in support, available to answer questions. In item 78, we have two registered in support available to answer questions, one of whom is representing Snyder and Associates. Are there questions for any of the registrants on consent agenda items? Seeing none. Is there any additional requests or discussion on the consent agenda? All right. So President Carter has moved it. Vice President Abbas will second it. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda. And that will bring us to our public hearing items. Let me just check for the early public comment. We don't have Craig Brown, do we? Yet?
No.
Thank you. All right. So our first public hearing is item two, which is Legis star 60914. We're opening a public hearing on creating sections of the MGO to change zoning at 4,000 to 4,150 Packers Ave and 4,201 North Sherman Ave. And so the public hearing is open. We have no registrants on this item. We will recess the public hearing. President Carter?
Yes. For which item are you on?
Item number two.
Okay, thank you. It is recommended to council to re-refer.
I can do either vote.
The motion is to re-refer to Plan Commission for their March 22nd meeting and back to council on the 30th. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of re-referral? Seeing no objection, that item is referred. And that brings us to item number three, which is Legis star 63902, Open a Public Hearing on Amending Various Sections of the MGO to Increase Allowable Densities and Decrease Conditional Use Thresholds in Certain Multifamily Residential Mixed Use and Commercial Districts. We have one registrant, Nicholas Davies of Richard Street, in support, not wishing to speak. Any questions for our registrant? Seeing none, we will recess that public hearing. President Carter?
Move to re-refer for March 22nd and back to council on the 30th.
Seconded to refer.
Moved and seconded to refer. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of re-referral. Takes us to item number four, which is Legis star 64250, Open a Public Hearing on Amending Portions of the MGO to Change the Front Yard Setback in Certain Districts to Support a Street Tree Canopy. On item number four, we have no registrants. I will close the public hearing. And Vice President Abbas?
Please add me as a cosponsor.
We'll add Vice President Abbas as a cosponsor on Legis star 64250. All right. So close the public hearing. President Carter?
Yes, move to re-refer to Plan on this 22nd and Common Council on the 30th of March.
On item number four... Ah, yes, thank you. I believe that is the correct. So I should have recessed that public hearing, apologies. The motion is to re-refer. Vice President Abbas?
Seconded to re-ref.
Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of referral? Seeing none, that item is referred back to Plan Commission. And that is our public hearings. So we will then move to item number 12. Give me a minute to get to the correct page, which is Legis star 64472, Authorizing the Mayor and Clerk to Enter into a Donation Agreement and Developers Agreement Regarding Glenway Golf Course. We do possibly have folks registered to speak on this. Do we have Craig Brown?
There's no one by that name in the list, but there is an attendee trying to get our attention that maybe is Craig under a different name, if you'd like me to unmute or not.
We can try that.
Yeah. Hello, sorry. I wasn't... I didn't have the opportunity to actually register myself.
But is it Craig Brown speaking?
It is Craig Brown.
Okay. So we'll have Craig Brown of Van Heys Ave in opposition, to be followed by Sue Shopscott. So go ahead, Craig.
I am opposed to the agreement for the following reasons. There is insufficient information given in the developers' proposal for the average citizen to form a concrete opinion on whether the redevelopment of Glenway Park will be more inclusive and accessible to a larger majority of citizens than it currently serves. There has been insufficient time for the average citizen to familiarize themselves with the proposal in order to understand its ramifications. It's been seven weeks from the introduction of the proposal to the Golf Subcommittee until tonight, which is really not enough time to question its implications and weigh its costs and benefits. This proposal's initial introduction to Common Council was only two weeks ago. And I'm wondering, since when have we ever entered into an agreement so quickly in Madison, especially one that will determine the use of a significant park space for decades to come? The case has not been made that the future of the park as a golf course is sustainable economically. Statistics say that it is not. The number of people playing golf is on a precipitous decline, with the number of players dropping 22% between 2003 and 2018. About 10% of Americans play golf. Madison skews over seven years younger than Americans on the whole, so it's likely that less than 10% of us play golf. And how can golf be sustainable economically when the number of players are dwindling? The case has not been made that the use of the park as a golf course is sustainable environmentally. I doubt that the developer would claim that it can be. And even though the proposal may be an improvement, all golf courses require a huge amount of water, pesticides, and fertilizer, which are costly to the ecosystem and difficult to manage in an environmentally sustainable way. As far as I'm aware, a strong case has never been made as to how golf in Madison can be reimagined to be inclusive, equitable, and anti-racist. I would argue that golf is inherently elitist and can never truly be inclusive, given its long history as exclusionary. As a city, investing this much time, energy, and money into this park or any park without first considering new uses of the space that can be enjoyed simultaneously by many different activities is just wrong. It's not who we should strive to be as a city. Signing this deal just perpetuates the exclusion. Some alders have argued that we should support the proposal now and that later there will continue to be opportunities for community engagement and detailed conversations on the park's design and uses. I don't think this is how Madison should enter into an agreement of the scale affecting public land for the next generation or more. We're being told we should go ahead and sign it, and then we'll figure out what we actually just gave away. So I urge Common Council to vote no on this proposal. On this proposal, we can do better than this, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Sue Shopcott of Morrison Street, in support, to be followed by Daniel Steinbrung.
Yes, thank you for letting me speak. I am a professional golfer. I have a coaching business, Change Golf Instruction, that partners with the City of Madison, and we provide golf instruction across the city courses. That's a disclosure, but it's not with, from that perspective, that I'm speaking tonight. I also have a PhD in education and during the off-seasons, and I consult with corporations, organizations, and businesses who are interested in growing golf participation and diversifying it. The city, from my perspectives, from my perspective, is committed to growing and diversifying golf, and that's one reason why I enjoy working with them. And the plans and the renovations at Glenway, I think, really reflect that. There's intentional design to operate the facility and make it accessible to a wider range of people. For example, the plans invite all members of the community to enjoy the facilities. That means that non-member or non-golfing members of the public can use it and experience golf in an informal way and realize that it is a sport that they can also participate in. And these casual collisions that we're going to give people in Madison are what can hook a different demographic and a different generation of golfers into the game. It's exactly how I started to play golf. I started to play golf by walking across the golf course to get to school back in England, in the UK, where golf is more of an everyman's sport. And that is what Glenway is trying to do. The benefits of golf are physical, social, and mental. And I agree that golf needs to be more diverse, and the project at Glenway is going to open up the opportunities for a more diverse population to enjoy the benefits of golf, just like I did. So I am in support of the plan, and thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Daniel Steinbrung of Woodridge Court, in support.
Hi, thank you. My name's Daniel Steinbrung. I have lived in Madison since 2000, an avid golfer, and a Black Madisonian. So just a couple points to make on this. First, I really want to encourage the council to take a look back at the Task Force on Municipal Golf Recommendations. There was a lot of really good work that went into that task force, and a lot of discussion about this idea of equity and inclusion, right? This is not something that has been passed over or not thought about. I think that it's really important that we take advantage of this opportunity that is put in front of us by Michael Kaiser. Having had the opportunity to play Glenway for years and walk the course with him and talk through what some of the ideas may be, man, this is, again, a really great opportunity to revolutionize this course. The type of changes that are being thought about and proposed truly do make it more inclusive, allow beginner golfers to come to the course. It was mentioned earlier that golf can never be an inclusive game, given its history, and I really want to dispute that. I think, again, the conversations that have been happening in Madison, in groups of golfers of color, has been such that we love this game, we love this city, and really are looking for more opportunities, more places to bring others in. Again, last thing I'll say is, please go back and look at the Task Force Recommendations. Again, this has been hashed out for months and months and months. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a number of other folks registered as available for questions. I don't see any of them in the Zoom meeting, however. So are there questions for any of our speakers? Seeing none, President Carter, a motion?
Okay. Motion to adopt?
Vice President Abbas?
I can do both.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Are there questions for staff? Alder Bidar?
Another question, but I'd like to take this opportunity to ask Eric Nepper, Park Superintendent, to give us just a very brief overview of this project.
Eric?
Certainly. Thank you. And for the council, the developer and donor, Michael Kaiser, is on the call. I see his name slightly different. I emailed the mayor, so she had it. If someone wishes to call on him for a question. But certainly, I can give a brief overview. The project, the resolution before you tonight would authorize a donation agreement with the Madison Parks Foundation and Michael and Jocelyn Kaiser. That donation is for all costs incurred to update Glenway Golf Course. That golf course update would be tied to the conceptual master plan approved by the Board of Park Commissioners and would be implemented in 2021. But the roots of this project, as the Speaker, Mr. Steinbrung, indicated, Task Force on Municipal Golf in Madison Parks. And I want the council to know that the debate about Glenway as a golf course or not was discussed at length at that task force, as were all the courses. What's the future of them? Should we have golf at all? Should we have golf at all? The rates of play? And it is certainly notable, the task force recommended a proposed future reduction in holes, but Glenway was not the focus. The task force also recommended it be more sustainable and ecologically minded and reducing water and fertilizer inputs, all those type of ecological things, enhancing natural areas where we can, and a focus on equity and inclusion. The actual work being proposed and planned for 2021 is the professional design and development of the golf course that sets the table for how we achieve many of those things. The project website outlines that we are working with a team of ecologically minded folks, many of them associated with UW, including the OJ Norris School. Such a talented group that we are working to identify plant and species selection, all including the turf. The turf grass group is going to put in, install turf that will dramatically reduce the water. We will also have a management plan that will frankly train golfers to understand what it's supposed to look like. And it's supposed to be brown in August, you know, on the edges. There'll still be irrigation, but that's okay, right? And certainly, Michael or someone else is a golf designer, be better at that part of describing how it looks and why it's important. But the other pieces that are really important are, there's a programming team of how do we program this space? Because right now it's a golf course, eight months a year, pretty well only. But this has started to open the doors, the task force and this proposal to, what about things like on the ninth way in the mornings? Well, nobody's playing golf on the ninth fairway. And if the ninth fairway has a much lower use of pesticide applications and a softer turf, maybe that works really well. Walking trails through the golf course. I know I've heard concerns that that's implausible and can't be done safely. It's done safely all over the UK and Ireland. It's, it's common. And now can we execute on it? Let's work through those details. And that's where we talk about future engagement. We were absolutely committed to engaging on the programming of this course being proposed to be updated over the coming months. The timing specifically here is tied to a unique opportunity to the donor and his professional team. Michael and the team that is involved, including multiple golf architects from Wisconsin, have the between, well, this year in 2021, which this year means April made, definitely May, June, July, when you have to rebuild a golf course if you want grass to grow for next year. They can do it this year, they can't do it next year. So from my perspective, this is a chance to implement the task force recommendations at one of our courses, at very, at no direct cost to the city other than the staff time and that type of stuff and no reliance on the tax levy. And then to program that to see if this can work. And the cost to the city is to give up some revenue this year. But I would remind everyone, as I have the finance committee and other meetings, that not getting revenue this year is certainly not desirable, but not getting revenue and having to pay for capital improvements is even less desirable from a financial perspective. And so that's kind of the overview and I'm happy to answer questions. I know Michael is on the call and, and he could answer the architecture or what the work is and what their vision is of how they do that work.
Thank you, Eric. Questions for Eric or other staff? Alder Evers?
Yes, Eric. Could you just review for us, please, the, the public engagement meetings that were held and the, the number of participants who showed up for those meetings, please?
Certainly. I, I can't recall the number of people all the way back to the task force, but I will just give you the, the task force held 10 meetings and then two public question and comment time periods back then. Those were pre pandemic. I remember they were in person. They were both well attended, maybe 170 people, 170 at those meetings back in the 2019, 20 range. The specific Glenway project has been to the golf subcommittee twice, the park commission twice. And then there's the, the larger public engagement meeting had a little over, I think at max attendance was 220, 220 people. I attribute that a lot to the excitement that came with the, and questions we got. We've got a lot of question and answer from the newspaper articles on the, on this story and the, or the project.
So in your estimation, is that a, a pretty good number, an indication of, you know, positive community engagement and contrary to the testimony we heard that people have not had an opportunity to weigh in?
Well, I mean, it's, it's certainly true that there's, there's always opportunities for more engagement. But from my perspective, when we have a, what we have before us really is a nine hole golf course that's currently going to fail infrastructure wise, not environmentally friendly, doesn't offer any other alternative uses. And we have an opportunity to have someone else pay with no strings attached to give us the, and it should have been clear earlier, we're still going to own and operate the course, right? Would pay to update that course, set the table for future use, which we're not determining in this agreement. That's going to come with the future actions from the park commission. So yeah, I mean, I, I think it does. And I know it's not as, it's faster than we'd ideally like to see, but I, I think this conversation, almost all the feedback we've heard has been positive. I look forward to delivering a positive result.
Well, thank you. That's my impression too, is having sat in on these meetings, that the response has been overwhelmingly positive. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Any additional questions for staff? Seeing Aldo Hellehey?
Hi, this question is for Eric. Eric, what are some of the strategic objectives in term of revolutionizing this course when it comes to equity and inclusion?
No, it's a great question. I think the first thing, and I think a pretty exciting little, it looks maybe a little detailed, but I think it's important. When you have a park that currently, eight months a year is, to be there, it feels like you need to pay, right? Do you need to pay? I think having walking paths and any other things that are clearly free and are known to be free is a way to revolutionize a little bit. Additionally, the putting green, if you notice the putting course is quite sizable, right up the corner of Glenway and Speedway. Our intention programmatically is to allow, it's not putt putt like a Vitence, but it's putting on a natural surface, but that would be free and accessible and advertised as such, right? And another piece of the programmatic inclusion plan would be to do things like have movie nights at the park. And that's on the non golf kind of side. The movie night I'm pretty set on, but obviously we'll go through a program plan, but I think it would be phenomenal to, to get diversity of users across our city and neighborhoods to come enjoy the park space. But from the golf course specific angle on diversity and inclusion, especially on, on being more, breaking down, I think some of what is first an image issue, because I can assure you that the golfers who golf at Madison parks, they, they are certainly reflective of the community we serve. That, that is not all white men, right? We serve, and Glenway particularly serves a lot of women golfers. Yohar is an example of a course that serves a very significant number of African American and I would say Mung golfers, both tend to gravitate to Yohar. It's one of the reasons in the task force, there's a recommendation to sustain it. But in college age golfers, again, often on the lower incomes side of things are really use Glenway a lot as well. But so what do you do to include there? You keep rates affordable. That's the first thing. How do you do that? The first thing is don't pay a lot of money for capital improvements you got to recover. We have that one checked. So the rates is the first way. We're already very affordable in the marketplace. We want to sustain that. Other things include working with folks, you heard from Sue earlier, who works with us as a teaching pro. She's done a lot of work on league creation and formulation that are intentionally inclusive leagues. We look forward to continue to work with her and others to try to pull events in to show that Glenway is reflective of our community. We've had some initial conversations there. Another piece of the puzzle that is not a part of this donation agreement that we're talking about today, but we're working towards, is looking at implementing a caddy program that could be a youth employment opportunity. That caddy program would not be funded by the city, but would be funded by external sources as well and provide that, provide opportunities to our youth. Those are some of the big things that kind of pop in my mind. And the big, and the other part I didn't say, which of course is true, we focus a lot on, we got to train staff, right? Train and develop our staff to make sure we're breaking down any of those things that make golf course clubhouses stodgy. I'd really like to abandon that term if we could. Clubhouses doesn't seem like the right term to me. It seems like we could find a different one. But those are a couple of key, I would say, objectives we have. We want to see more diverse golfers and grow in the areas where we're, we're not. We haven't historically seen as much as we'd like at Glenway. We also want to see a more diverse employment group, which that's where the caddy program also ties in. Youth caddies, 14, 15 year olds become city golf employees in 16, 17, 18, right? That's another, another part of that. And then alternative uses, because that's a part of being more reflective of our community in total. Because as the speaker earlier said, certainly, I think it's more than 10% of Madisonians golf, but it's not more than 15. And so a lot of folks don't golf and we need to give them a purpose for this public land.
One more question, is there an opportunity to work with First T? If they're, yeah.
Yeah, that's a really good question. Sorry, I forgot to mention that partnership and I hope they're not watching. But the First T of South Central Wisconsin does a lot of programming with us already on the golf courses. They also do a lot of educationally based programming with MMSD in a partnership. They're, the students they serve are predominantly non white students and they do a really good job in my estimation and we will absolutely work with them to sustain their relationship with Glenway. Our first call, when we started thinking about this project, was to reach out to them to make sure we had a way to host them this year in 21 during the disruption. They are a key partner. Darren Steindl is the project manager. He's on the call and he could certainly walk through all that we do with First T if there's more interest, but they're a longstanding partner and certainly a part of the future of Glenway and the golf enterprise in total.
Thanks, Eric. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And my colleagues stole my thunder because I certainly was going to bring up that partnership. Eric, could you tell me, and I want you to look at Elver Park and, and skiing and ice skating and those winter sports and how the partnership with organizations brought more young people into ice skating and skiing and those predominantly non traditional sports? And so talk about the successes, just briefly about those successes in that area. And so the reason being is paralleling it with the face of golfing.
Yeah, I think it's actually, you, you heard from, from Sue earlier and she would be one of the key pieces of that type of vision. What you need to do to make those kind of partnerships, to take non traditional, are, you know, unique sports that are not traditionally embraced by a culture, to bring folks into that, you need to create the space that's accommodating it for the playability, like learning, a learning, a place where you can learn. Elver does that well with lots of ice room, lots of different ski routes. Glenway in this project does that well. It's going to have very short holes, like you'll be able to play it very short, which is where you want to learn the game of golf. You want to learn it closer. The further distance you have, the more opportunity you have, like I do, to spray it everywhere. But that's the first part, facility design. And that's what this project does. Mr. Kaiser and his donation will provide a facility that can be used to teach folks how to golf much easier than current. That's number one. Number two, you got to have the right staff and you got to train them on how to be inclusive to everybody walking to the door. I don't think we're perfect on that, but we continue to strive to do better. And then you need a diverse staff. And that's an area where, my opinion, the caddy program, those type of projects and other things, working with folks in the industry who are leaders on diversifying golf, I'm excited about. And then the last part is really the, how do you get the, the kid or the person out there? You need a talented person and that's where I pick, I'm pointing out Sue. It's not just Sue, there are others. Mr. Steinbring, who was on earlier, I know, works at the Lucier Center and we've talked about this a little bit, about how do you get kids out who maybe haven't had a lot of experience golfing? You got to equip them, those things can be donation, but what the end is, you need good instruction. And that's what's happened at Elver. There's some good quality instruction and partnership and support. So make sure people feel that when you start a new game or a new endeavor, most of us when we start any endeavor, we fail a lot, right? And, and you got to fail in public to learn stuff in a park, right? So there's a little bit of that support network. Those are the key elements, I would say. And in this project right here before us right now, providing the space that can, can do those things. Because right now Glenway, when we have the First T out there and we partner with them, when they're doing their training rounds, they're teeing up in the fairway. There's not a tee box designed for them. When people have relatively slow swing speeds, that means they don't hit it quite as far, they're also struggling to play the course in a fun way. It's not a, it looks like a beginner's course, but it's not truly. It's been designed and built, it was designed and built in the 1920s for men in the 1920s, which means if you hear from a middle aged man today, he might say the course is really short, right? Because equipment and all this other things. But most golfers who are learning would find Glenway to be long, actually. And this project reduces that dramatically.
Great. Thank you, Alder. Any other questions for staff or any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, the motion is to adopt. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adoption? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of adoption. I think you all are trying to prove a point here.
Again?
We reached the end of our agenda, Aldo.
We did?
We did.
Okay. I didn't know that. Okay. I moved to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn at the early hour of 7:16 PM. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adjourning? Seeing no objection, we are adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.